Change my view. There we go. Yeah, it must be my view, let me say.
Okay, Jim, you can start at any topic.
Call the meeting to order, a special meeting to review. The P O C D for twenty thirty-two and it is a public. Hearing Susan, if you would please call the roll.
Sure, Ms. Austin. Mister Castignoli. Mister Castignoli.
Not here.
Okay. Mister Hirsch.
I am here.
Mister Cater. Mister Collegian. Mr. Moore.
Not here.
Okay. Mister Mortimer.
Present.
Mister Saddy. Mister Zaharides.
Here.
And Chairman Quish.
I am here as well. Do we have a quorum?
Uh, you do.
Okay, that's good.
We do.
Very good. Okay, so the purpose of this meeting is to review the draft of the. Plan of Conservation and Development. The Plan of Conservation and Development is. By statute renewed every ten years. Um, we have been in process. Of working on this via subcommittee. Um, for a couple of years going now, we also have engaged a. Um, third-party consultant with. Expertise in. Land use and specifically in. Uh, city plans like this. Um, who I believe will be joining us. Um, in a couple of minutes, I think what I'd like to see is if David would give an overview and then if Adam is here. Um, then he will. Give us kind of a high-level look at. At the plan and then we can open it up to comments and if you want to comment. You can raise, wave your hand like this, or there is a. Um, a spot on your Zoom screen. Um, that will allow you to electronically wave. With that, David, um, I'd like you to give whatever overview you feel compelled to.
So, you know, tonight, we're, we're here to gather a public comment on the, the draft as it is currently. Uh, we will be doing the same thing a week from tonight. As you're all aware of, this is really just a freshening and update of the current draft. Um, it's not a brand-new document, although it actually has a look and feel of a new document. And, uh, you know, we are required to do this every ten years. Uh, the sections that are in there are, are more or less dictated by state statute, the major sections. And, uh, you know, looking forward to, uh, you know, hearing, uh, you know, everyone's comments and suggestions. And Adam is here. So, you know, Adam, our consultant, uh, has anything he would like, uh, to add, uh, he could. And, uh. He may have stepped away for a second. Adam.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I just muted my, my video. I apologize for that. A little low too. Hopefully that helps. Um, so yeah, I would just like to thank everybody for taking the opportunity to. Um, attend today's meeting and to provide comments on the P O C D. Uh, Dave has it up and, you know, I think we can just sort of, uh, leave this, uh. Up for right now that the P O C D is divided into these sections as, as Dave mentioned, these are. Um, largely the ones that are mandated by state statute. Um, the way that the document is organized is that there are. Uh, is sort of a background to each of these sections that provides information. Relevant to, um, the, the topic that's, uh, being discussed. And that at the end of the section. Um, there are a series of recommendations, um, for, uh, the town to implement. Um, the key thing here and one of the reasons why the, the document was organized this way was. When we took a look at your last P O C D, um, one of the things that we realized was that all of the recommendations were sort of. Peppered into the narrative of the text, which made it very difficult for. People to understand what was actually being recommended and. One of the things that we think is a, a big improvement here is, is that. If you are interested in just the recommendations, if you're sort of aware of the. The general direction that the P O C D is going and you want to know what, what should be done. Um, you can just skip to those sections and that turns them into sort of handy task lists in a lot of ways to review. Um, so with that, I don't want to, uh, I see that there are a fair number of people here. I don't want to, um. Belabor the point of going into the details of each section. Um, and I'll hand it back to, to David to, to proceed.
Yeah, well, I'll, then I'm going to hand it back to the chair, uh, because I think, uh. Uh, we should open up the floor to, uh, the public.
Yeah, um, at first I would, uh. Briefly want to see if any, uh. Anybody on the. Any members of the board would like to. Say anything first, and if not, we'll go right into. Public comment. So again, just wave your hand or electronically wave and David, if you would be the gatekeeper.
Yep. So, uh, does anyone have any comments, uh, that they would like to share with us this evening? Anybody? If you do, please wait. Oh, we're going to go with Mister Platt, the firsthand.
And you, you got to always unmute yourself, Mister Platt.
Okay, well, I, uh, read the section on historic preservation, no surprise. That's the main section I'm interested in and it's, you know, on the face of it, that's a very nice section and it has, says all the right things. But what I'm wondering about is, uh. But what about the plan of, I mean, excuse me, the M C D D, the Milford Center Design District, which encompasses. Prospect Street. Power Field. Uh, Wilcox Park, the First Church, the Plymouth Building, Royalton Hall, et cetera. In fact, the whole north side of, uh, of, uh, West Main Street from the First Church out to, uh, High Street. And, uh. And this bothered me because, uh. Back a couple of years ago when they had the, uh, application for. Uh, building, uh, the, um. Uh, the apartment and. Office complex at, uh. On sixty-seven Prospect Street, the Peter Pruden property, which certainly is probably one of the most historic areas in town. Uh, members of the board said, oh, I'm having to vote for this re-election because that's the way it's the zone. Well, we have the Preservation Trust and I also, uh. Have for a long time said, please take Prospect Street and these other areas out of the M C D D where. You cannot have this, uh, commercial, uh, development, but. It was too late. There we were, we, yeah, we, that project was approved. The thing was though, it also provided that the house on the project, project, uh, the, uh. Be restored, but I don't see anything that's happened to it. Uh, I don't know about enforcing this or not. But just nothing has happened there. Uh, so, but the main thing is, uh. Then we get some protection for these historic districts, historic areas.
That's a very good point, um, and. Uh, are we, um, David, taking notes on these so that we can bring these. Subjects up, um, at our subcommittee and discuss it with our consultant to. Um, see what we can do to address that.
Sure. Okay. Okay, the next person who had their hand up was, uh, Emmeline Harrigan. And that be followed by Eric, who will then be followed by Michelle.
Hi, David.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emmeline Harrigan and, uh, I reside at one zero seven Orno Road. Um, I like the reformat for the P O C D. I think it's, it makes it much easier, uh, agreed to find the goals and the policies. I just had a couple of suggestions and I think I was at one of the prior meetings and I don't know. Whether I was able to provide comment at that one or whether it was just a presentation, but. In the C D D three. It, um, that still doesn't allow for residential and, and. You know, as a corridor, I think that has evolved over time. I think the C D D three should probably reintroduce residential. Um, given its adjacency to apartment buildings on the south side. Um, it's natural. Proximity to the, the train station and the Milford Center area. That that might be a good area in order to allow for additional multifamily housing. Um, the other thing was, I think in the. When you talk about the sea level rise section. Um, I think, and, and I will disclose that I worked for the Town of Fairfield, um, as the Assistant. Uh, Planning Director there. Um, I think that it's, it's helpful within your P O C D for funding purposes. To include language where you have the sea level rise, um. Section for, um, specific resiliency planning efforts as well as. Potential project funding opportunities. Including acquisition where available. Um, just because, uh, you know, even. For the town that I work for now. Uh, what we are quickly realizing with sea level rise is that there's not enough room. Um, to implement resiliency. Um, projects, uh, easily. So I think that acquisition teamed with. Resiliency efforts are, it's going to be a, a future. Um, thing to both look at from a planning perspective as well as. Project implementation and I would in very strong language, um. I think that, and David, you can correct me, I think that both the wastewater treatment. This facilities are not yet. Completely protected. Um, I would strongly suggest that you put language in there. For any kind of funding opportunities for either of those projects. They've proven to be very successful in other municipalities. I think Stratford is doing a project now, Fairfield did their project. Um, I think West Haven was looking at a project and those tend to. Be very agreeable for, um, funding sources, uh, as it protects, you know, a good number of. Structures long-term, uh, and makes them resilient from. You know, those wastewater treatment facilities not being able to provide that sewer service. Um, the other, the other thing that I wanted to comment on, you know, given. The recent increase in pedestrian fatalities, um, both. Um, here in Milford, unfortunately, um, in other communities, uh, particularly along state roads. Um, I think that the language should very strongly, um. Also include language that indicates working with the state. D O T on future planning studies. Um, to hopefully, uh, reduce some of the. I will say very wide auto-oriented, um, design of the past. And look at ways in which we can intro- introduce better multimodal. And pedestrian crossings in the future, um, as well as, um, you know. More room for bicycle infrastructure. Um, these are very, very roomy, which is why people drive really, really fast and then don't have. You know, the proper reaction time to. Um, you know, be able to deal with, um, crashes with both pedestrians and cyclists. Um, the crash data map is frankly startling. Um, and I think that, you know, that needs to be part of it, but more specifically, I think it's our state roads, um. That, uh, really have been, um. Have been ignored in terms of providing some of these, um. Required safety improvements. Um, I have a couple of just really. Um, quick comments as well, um. I, I think that within the multifamily section. One of the things I think that hasn't really been discussed specifically is an inclusionary. Uh, requirement as other towns have implemented. Uh, whether it's ten percent, um, inclusionary to, you know, eighty percent of the median income. Or some sort of split, for example, Shelton is, is pondering. Uh, you know, doing a split, uh, similar to the eight thirty G statute, but for. Private developers. I think that we have certainly seen in Milford that private developers are certainly profitable in their projects. And requiring, uh, even a ten percent inclusionary requirement. Um, as we've done in Fairfield, for example, for projects over ten units. Um, has not reduced. The demand for these projects, but it also provides. You know, a, a very necessary. Uh, affordable housing supply to folks who need lower than market rate units. Um, and then I just have a couple of, uh, quick nicks in terms of a comment on page eight. Um, which is the. Map that shows. Um, the greenways and the only, my only consideration for that would be to expand the area. Um, that shows.
Emmeline, I hate to interrupt, but we do have a lot of people here and, uh, your, your, your comments are quite valuable. Um, on some of the edit points, if you would put those in writing and send them into David's office. Um, that'll give more people a chance to, uh, to share their thoughts, but I, I, I appreciate everything you said and I think there's. There's a, there's a lot of, um, very good observations there and I want to thank you personally for, uh, for your thoughtfulness.
Okay.
And, and, and Emmeline, if you'd like, once everyone else has spoken, you can come back and you can speak again if you feel as though you weren't fully heard.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. The next, uh, person to be heard, uh, will be Eric Johnson.
Uh, evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eric Johnson, forty Benson Street. Uh, been a commissioner on Milford Historic Preservation Commission since December twenty sixteen. Um, thanks for holding this public session. I really have poured through the, the P O C D. Um, I think it's well thought out. There is a few things, of course, based on what it is that we do, um, that we'd like to call attention to. Um, as a commission, a lot of my colleagues are here this evening. Um, one thing that I would certainly like to, to point out is that, um. I have the second what Dick Platt has said, uh, without regards to concerns with the M C D D. Um, particularly in the very introduction for the P O C D on historic preservation. Um, just a quick quote out of the introduction, um, it says to ensure better contextual compatibility. Uh, new construction with existing structures, basically trying to balance our historic. Architecture that, that currently exists with any future, um, construction and that's something that I really would hope that. That this board would keep in mind, um, as they continue forward with the draft. Um, when it comes to future recommendations for historic preservation, I do want to point out a few potential. Um, additions that probably should be worked into the recommendations, um. Since the last time I believe, uh, a draft has been developed, uh, Milford has really gone. Taken a lot, several steps to add ordinances in terms of. Historic preservation, the creation of our commission being a big part of that. Um, so there's two sections of, uh, chapter eighteen, uh, with regards to city planning that I would like to. Just hope the board keep in mind as they move forward with the recommendations. Uh, the first one would be, uh, section two twenty-five. Um, two twenty-five in the city, eighteen, two twenty-five in the city code, um, describes the, the need for and the process of. Uh, architectural review in terms of historic preservation and I believe it adds, uh, some much-needed teeth to the recommendations. Um, I feel that the recommendations are, are very well-intended and I think it's a, a great step in a right direction. But I do feel that maybe some more specifics would be necessary. Uh, one big part. Of section two twenty-five, uh, is two twenty-five D, which calls for the adoption of the. Department of the Interior Secretary Standards for the treatment and the. The modification of historic properties and I think some inclusion of that into the P O C D, I think would be, be very important moving forward. Um, the next section is section two twenty-seven. Um, section two twenty-seven sort of highlights the. I- in very clear terms, the purpose of not only our commission, but the, the need for historic preservation and. Just a quick quote on that, hoping that, that this board will move forward, keeping this in mind. Um, the concept of having certificate of appropriateness, quote, is to help the alteration, restoration, moving, dismantling or demolition. Which in the opinion of. Our commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, could be detrimental to the interests of the city. So, moving forward, I, I just hope that the board keep this in mind and as they continue forward with the draft. Hopefully look to sections two twenty-five and two twenty-seven of chapter eighteen. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Eric, thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
Okay, the next two people in line would be, uh, Michelle, followed by Laptop Two's iPhone. Michelle, you have to unmute yourself.
I thought I was. All right. Good evening. My name is Michelle Kramer. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, um, the current president of Milford Preservation Trust and the Vice Chair. Of the Milford, uh, Historic Preservation Commission. And I would just like to say that I would certainly want to see. Um, much more robust and specific language, um, about historic preservation in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Uh, I do think that all preservation entities. Could be mentioned in your introduction. Um, our commission, which was created in two thousand sixteen after the state enabling legislation allowed for our ordinance. Um, our, our commission should be mentioned and the two local historic. District commissions should be mentioned because those, uh, those three entities. Are the first line of defense really, um, and, and. Most of those commissions are notified, uh, when there's, for example, a demolition, uh, perhaps being considered. You do mention the demolition delay. Uh, which was updated, but there is no mention of the, of the historic ordinance, which I do think, um, should be there. Should be part of your document. Um, and so in general, I would just like to see and, and when you mention, um, that. The, uh, design standards are going to be, and they are, are the, the M C D D design standards. I didn't really look thoroughly to see if there's inclusion of the secretary of the interior standard, which Eric was referring to. But there should absolutely be a link somewhere in the document to those standards because those are sort of the, the guiding principle. Um, in the entire United States, so I would really hope to see more. Specifics in the document. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Michelle. Appreciate your concern.
Okay, the next person, uh. Who just turned his camera off, Laptop Number Two, you've got your hand up. If you'd like to identify yourself and, uh, participate. This is your opportunity.
I'm you. There you go.
Okay, so hopefully Dave, this, um, I'm coming through. It's Bill Silver. I'm Laptop Two.
Okay.
You can hear me. Okay, so I'm Bill Silver. Um, I live at fifty-five Governor's Avenue and I am. The Chairman of the Milford Historic Preservation Commission. And, um, also an architect, uh, with my own firm, Silver Petroselli and Associates. Um, parroting on what Eric and, uh, Michelle and Dick have said, I will not reiterate it, but we agree. As the commission, um, uh, for some of those suggestions and. Probably because I've worked with so many P O C Ds throughout the state, almost all of them. Uh, name the historic districts in the historic preservation section. So it's admirable that you mentioned the Downs House and you mentioned the state delay or the town delay, demolition delay ordinance. But you don't mention the three commissions that, uh, are, are there to serve the citizens. Uh, and so, yes, while this is a generalist document of guidelines. It helps reinforce that there are others that are partnered with you. Um, the other aspect that I'd like to make too is, uh, we have found, uh, not only with sixty-seven Prospect, but other properties. Um, and developments, uh, recently that infill has represented the greatest threat. To the historic character of our neighborhoods. And infill doesn't mean just the listed historic properties, but it means those that may not be listed but adjacent to. And so, uh, the thought is on page thirty-six, thirty-seven. Where you have recommendations or goals is to develop language that, uh. Guides and manages the infill of properties in or around the historic. Um, districts and properties. It's very broad. Certainly this document is very broad as well. But it gives a little bit more emphasis, if not goal of. Uh, protecting neighborhoods, not just the individual registered properties. And, uh, I think, eh, eh, when people identifying the various areas of Milford going by the duck ponds. They say, oh, this is a great upper duck pond area, but some of those properties are not listed and yet they're part of the neighborhood. And yet, uh, subject to infill in the future. That could be uncontrolled because they don't fall under the guides, guidelines of any of the historic districts. So, just broad language that deals with more about the goals to guide and manage infill. Um, and then last but not least, uh, even though traffic is certainly a part of the police department's responsibility. Um, I would encourage. In our traffic section of the P O C D, the encouragement of strategic installation of passive speed controls. Throughout the city, uh, and obviously that takes the traffic division's input, et cetera. But it is pretty graphic how little passive speed controls Milford has. And based on my experience over the last forty years of appearing before the traffic. The Police Commission and the Traffic Department, uh, there is a, um. Avoidance of any passive traffic or many passive traffic controls. Uh, that we see so much throughout the state and the region. That are used successfully and I would encourage it to be a broad goal within the P O C. Of a traffic, of encouraging the strategic installation of passive speed controls. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Well, Aton's raising his hand.
I, I have a couple of questions, um. To you, David. Jim, is that okay?
Yes, right.
Oh, thank you. Uh, David, uh, what are passive speed controls and what are infills?
Okay, so something like a speed bump. Like a roundabout. Uh, things that, mechanisms that can, um. Uh, restriping to narrow the width of a road, uh, things that can be done to bring down the speed of vehicles. Um. Physical, physical things that can be done to bring down speed of vehicles.
Other than stops, other than stoplights, up sides.
Right, right. And then, uh, infill is, uh, uh, when you have a property that's going to be redeveloped. Um. You know, typically, uh, you know, in an area where it's already developed, something is taken down and put in, it's, it's infilled. So you could have, you could have, for instance, uh, uh. As we see along the water, there's a lot of infill where, you know, there are smaller houses that. Get removed and you put in bigger houses. Uh, there are lots around town that, uh. Um, may have an extra building lock and, you know, houses put in there. Um, I'm just using house, uh, generically, possibly commercial, um, um. And, uh, so that's, that, that's the concept. So you, you would be adding new buildings, uh, in an area that might have old buildings. Because they're new, you're infilling.
So if there are setbacks between properties, how does putting a building on parcel A affect? What goes, uh, 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 an older building on parcel B? I'm not understanding that. You're not doing any work in a setback and you can build it in a way. How's that affect your neighbor necessarily?
Well, I don't, I, I don't want to give testimony since this is a public hearing. But, and I don't want to speak for the speakers, but I think the concern is that you could have a new building going in. That, um, is not of the same character. Uh, might not be of the same proportions and dimensions of other buildings that might be around it. So. The concern would be, is there a way of. Developing a standard where you'd have a better idea what's going in there to make it more harmonious with what's going in there. Uh, versus, uh, just. Um, allowing someone to go in and build what they want and as an example, you would, uh, think of some of the. Um, houses along the water, they might look very colonial and then, you know. And then all of a sudden you see something that would fit nicely, you know, in Malibu in California with a flat roof and very modern. Uh, one could argue that that, uh, wasn't a sympathetic, um, uh. Uh, infill at, at that site. And, uh, Adam, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I think that's a great description.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, does anyone else, uh, have, uh, uh, would anyone else like to speak, uh, this evening? Uh, okay, we say, say a hand from, uh, John Cranz.
Hello, good evening, everybody. John Cranz, fifteen West Main Street. Uh, former parsonage of the, the First Church. I'm also a member of the Milford Historic Preservation Commission. Would just like to basically echo the rest of the commission's, uh. You know, thoughts and comments tonight as well as Mister Platt. You know, when it comes to historic. You know, when it comes to historic preservation and the language specifically that's talked about, I think one of the important things to mention in there is scale and then kind of defining what that means. I think sometimes with these developments, what'll happen is you'll end up saving a property only to dwarf it with a ginormous development behind it. I think we've seen that happen a couple of times here in Milford and it's kind of more things on the on the docket, so to speak. So I think protecting, you know, what we have here in terms of history, in terms of the the character, especially downtown, the the historic districts in the downtown area. So I think just some specific language to to talk about that would be very helpful.
The next person online who raised their hand would be Joseph, followed by Donna.
Great. Thank you. Joseph Montsec, sixty one Governors Avenue. I'd like to thank everyone for doing all the work on this report. I know I've seen there's a lot of meetings, a lot of effort that goes into it. I just wanted to want one comment I wanted to make about the infill, just I think one of the one of the big infills is, you know, you tear down, you take an old house and you tear it down and and then all of a sudden there's six houses and, you know, a sixth house apartment building in there, which we've seen several of them go around to the this downtown area. So that to me is an infill, not necessarily they're doing a one for one change in the look of the house, and I don't like the look of your house, but it's the fact that you had, you know, one neighbor, now you've got a big apartment house overlooking, over dwarfing your house. So so to me, or you have a a side yard that you've that's been a side yard for, you know, a hundred years and then you've taken that and put six or seven houses in it, you know, apartments in it. So to me, that's that's what I think of as infill. So and then I echo everyone's past speakers, there is very little in the in the report about historic districts. So I hope we we do, they they had a good testimony about that. Another section that doesn't have much ink is the is the industrial section. You know, industrial section is probably one of the sections that drives a lot of the the good tax tax bills, you know, tax income for the city and drives a lot of good jobs that that people in in the city might want to have. So, you know, I I wonder if if there's things that that could go into this this report that would that would encourage industrial development. There's a lot of commercial development for, it talks a lot about, you know, stores and and sales type things, but industrial is probably what you'd really like to see. So and I know one of the things is encroaching on industrial areas where, you know, if you're in an industrial, you have a a factory or, you know, like the power plant and then, you know, people start building a lot of housing and and a lot of dense housing around your factory. You know, and then they start complaining about it, you know, the factory's noisy or, you know, it's it's a factory, it's gonna be noisy or it's gonna be a little inconvenient, but then people build their houses right next to it. And that, you know, you know, the owner has to, you know, deal with that. So, you know, how do we how do we encourage, not discourage, you know, industrial type installations? I I view sustainability, I said in sustainability, you know, I know there's some good work with people are doing with with planting trees, but I think we we need a very large effort to increase our tree planting. I think that would go a long way to maintain the character of the of the city. And we're having a large die off of trees. And I think there's a lot of areas in the city, you know, schools and along roadways where we can, the city can can really jumpstart planting new trees and everything, really help the beauty of our of our city. And I just, I did want to make one comment. I know on page seventy two, it talks about residential areas. And it says that every effort should be made to preserve the prescribed density underlying zone and promote and preserve commonly found single family homes. The board did just recently pass an ordinance that that every every single family home can now have a accessory apartment on it. So that seems to seems to go against that section of the sustainability guy here. So I'm just pointing that out. And that's that's about all I have have to say for now.
Thank you for your comments, Joseph. I appreciate your interest and input.
Thank you.
Uh, next per next person to speak would be Donna Ducko.
Yeah, hi, Donna Ducko, two thirty six Buckingham Avenue. As you know, I've been following along with the development of the P O C D for quite a while. It's been a lot of arduous work for everybody and I think it's it's looking pretty good. I do have some comments and I did email them to David. And I'll just do a quick rundown and my concerns really is regarding the C D D four and Chairman Quish had mentioned that that is a good opportunity for to move the M C D D, which I am in full agreement with because it's New Haven Avenue right outside of town between Gulf Street and Buckingham is residential and it's right near the Naterium. It's fifteen minutes to the downtown. In fact, there's a transit oriented development map that was in the previous P O C D where it just depicts that area of New Haven Avenue all the way out to the corner of Buckingham. And I know Mr. Quish mentioned possibly to Pond Point Avenue, which is also great. Because there's a lot of waterways, there's a waterfront around Gulf Pond and a lot of opportunities for walking trails and nature and waterfront homes in that area. And so there's some small neighborhoods, Cindy Circle, Davis Drive and Sylvan Court, which are right off of New Haven Avenue and they really, they abut Gulf Pond. So as you're going down New Haven Avenue toward Pond Point, you've got those little neighborhoods there that would be complemented by more residential developments along the waterway there. That's my opinion. So I agree with Mr. Quish's suggestion that the M C D D be, you know, extended down New Haven Avenue towards Pond Point. And everything else, I have emails. And so if you'd like to read all my other emails, I have some more comments in there. I won't waste all your time talking tonight.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate your continual presence at our meetings.
You're welcome.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand or wave. Okay, Cheryl Capielli, followed by followed by Paige.
Yes, that is correct. Let me give you my video because you need to see that. So, good evening, everybody. I, in keeping with Joseph's comments, I would like to say that I do feel that conservation is a huge part and as chair of the Conservation Commission, I don't feel that that has been given enough emphasis in this plan. I think that it's it's a basic need in the city and I realize that some provisions have been made, but there are many things, community gardens, the farmland in Milford that are mentioned, but they're really overlooked. The schools do need some access to not just shade trees, but maybe gardens in their areas or at least an introduction to nature. Right now, it's kind of a forgotten a plan in the the city's education program. You know, you have Girl Scouts that are able to participate in some outreach programs, but I do feel that we can do a lot toward educating either just the young children or include the teachers in our outreach. And I do feel that it would be most helpful not just planting trees. As Joseph said, that's a start, but it's not really the answer. So we'd like to participate in more of the city planning and activities. So if you would call on us to give our advice and opinions, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. I appreciate your time.
And Paige.
Hi, everybody. Paige Melio, nine Highwood in Milford, and I'm also director of the Arts Council Downtown. Two points. One is to back up what Cheryl just mentioned about open space and gardens, et cetera. I know that we have a large plot of community gardens up on North Street. But I really feel that the more densely populated areas along the shoreline, particularly in Walnut Beach and Devon, would greatly be appreciative of open spaces for community gardens. I know that there are a lot of plot availability up on North Street, but to drive across town to pick your weeds and to take care of your your garden and your plantings is difficult for a lot of people, particularly a lot of people who live in this area. And I think that you need to put community gardens and more livable open space in the areas where they're most needed. The people who live up on North Street have plentiful large yards, plenty of open spaces. They really don't need community gardens up there. I understand because it's not as densely populated that it's more easy to put facilities like that in that area. But again, I think looking towards the areas of the city that need it would be appreciated. The second point is to go back to Emmeline's comments about traffic and accidents. I will say that working in the downtown area and living anywhere in Milford, the what we see with the rising populations and the the areas of new building and T O D developments, et cetera, that the traffic patterns in the city have changed immensely. So there's a secondary effect to all of this development and the speeding, particularly in downtown. I know that with our events, we've probably had three or four people hit in the downtown area pedestrians coming to our facilities or otherwise enjoying downtown after or before one of our events. I think that there was made mention about speed bumps. I don't know whether or not, I know we had all those beautiful stamped crosswalks, perhaps if they were raised crosswalks, which I think are less inhibitive than speed bumps, but do slow the traffic down and make areas for pedestrian traffic more visible. Anyway, I just think that there are secondary issues that come up with these development in general, and I think that that's something that should be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Appreciate your thoughts.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments they'd like to share? If you do, please either raise your hand and wave or raise the electronic hand on your page. I'm looking. I do not see. Oh, well, Mr. Platt would like to speak again.
Unmute again, Mr. Platt, please.
There we go. Took me a while to find it. Yeah, just to clarify a little bit of what I said earlier, we have some very historic areas in Milford that are part of the M C D D. And I really think that and it should have been taken out, you know, as soon as the about twenty years ago when the final conservation development was adopted, they were put into the M C D D and and we've been asking since then to get them out and that hasn't happened. Now, why, for instance, is the First Church in the M C D D? Why is the Plymouth Building? Why is Laurelton Hall? And of course, then the property on Prospect Street, the first property of the first home lot of the Reverend Peter Putin, the first minister of the First Church and the leader of the founding of the city. And in his backyard was the first burial ground where the early settlers up to about sixteen fifty six were buried without permanent markers. Now, we can't prove exactly where those burials were because ground penetrating radar radar didn't find them, but remember, in the backyard of that house there was an in-ground pool. And obviously, when they built that, a bulldozer moved all the dirt around. So we can't prove they were buried there, but on the other hand, people can't prove that we're not buried there. So as I say, this is certainly one of the, if you want to call it the most sacred place in town for historic preservation, that's it. I thank you.
Does anyone else have anything new to add? Anyone else want to speak? Bill?
Yes. Yeah, and new is only to clarify the the question that you answered, and you answered it very well about passive traffic controls. Yes. Islands narrowing, things like that. But one thing that makes me cringe is speed humps. And when we only think of speed humps, it all makes us say, no way. I mean, speed bumps. And so that's why I don't want to advocate for speed bumps, but speed humps, hopefully everyone has seen them throughout the state. So believe me, I would encourage you to leave it with passive traffic, uh, speed controls and let the police department certainly become a part of it, but at least mention it as a goal.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who we haven't heard from? Okay, there's no one who we haven't heard from. So are there people who did not say everything they wanted to say who would like to speak further?
We have Cheryl with her hand up.
I just have a quick comment and then I'll give the floor to Emmeline because she was, she needs to say things. I just wanted to say that that swimming pool, which has now become a mosquito breeding ground, really needs to be addressed. I was at the D A R building for a garden club meeting. And that is, it's a cesspool. It it's really, as the summer comes on, that needs to be addressed. There may be dead animals in there. I'm not kidding. It's bad. There are no fences around it. Yeah, just my two cents. Okay, thank you.
Have you reported it to the Health Department? Because if it's a blighted property, they're the people who have
Thank you. I will do that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I figured I would let the D A R register, but I will do that since I saw it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Emmeline has her hand up. Emmeline?
Thank you. I just wanted to add my support for the additional housing. The additional housing comment within the plan that talks about re-reviewing whether or not there could be housing at the Connecticut Post Mall. I think that we're finding that you know, larger retail environments are really struggling, so they've had to diversify over time. And I think that that's a smart that's a smart thing to look at just in order to maintain the diversity for that property and make sure that it has long-term viability. It's one of our biggest taxpayers in town and it would be a shame to have the Connecticut Post Mall suffer the same kind of issues I think that larger mall properties have faced across the state of Connecticut. So diversifying it, I think, helps it survive. The other thing in terms of the traffic is, and this is just a wish list item. For years, I think that the the Orange Avenue North Street double intersection has been problematic and I would love to see a roundabout there. I don't know whether that's practical, but there are too many choices and a very constrained amount of space, but that would be a conversation that I would certainly, you know, suggest a planning effort for that and a strong conversation with the D O T as you move forward. And then the other small nitpicky things, I'll send an email to David. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone? I see a hand from Donna Ducko would like to speak again.
Yes, hi. I just want to echo Emmeline's recommendations for roundabouts. I think that they they had them throughout the state in a lot of small rural towns and they just buffer the massiveness of the highways that go through them, their their state highways, state roads, but they just make it seem a little bit more quaint and they put decorative stones in
Decorative stones in there and gardens and stuff, so that roundabout becomes a focal center for that road. So. I think that's a great idea, all over Milford, actually. And um, the other thing was on the Connecticut Post Mall. I agree a hundred percent that um, that should definitely be considered for um, the diversified, you know, with. It, housing and stuff because to Emmeline's point that they are whatever. Struck um, tax, biggest tax providers and we want to, you know, protect our tax base and that would help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Um. You do, please raise your hand or hit the electronic uh, button. I'm looking.
With, with no one else wanting to speak at this point, I think that um, we will uh, have a, another. Um, public session a week from tonight. Is that accurate, David?
That is correct.
Okay, so that'll be another special meeting and um, we'll gather notes and I guess um. We can try some additional outreach to um, other stakeholders uh, downtown. Um. Go for association at Walnut Beach, you know, make sure we're reaching out to um. Any stakeholder groups that we think may have an interest. And again, we will compile. Suggestions and then we will review them. Um, I see, Michelle, give me a second. Um, then we will review them in committee. Um, and then. Whether we have additional public sessions or not is yet to be uh, determined. But uh, at one point, once we uh, simulate uh, those suggestions that we feel. Uh, warrant inclusion, we'll go back to Adam and his team. And come up with a final draft for the full board uh, to review. It, this. Document, as it's edited, will be available online for viewing and questions and comments. Are welcome and they should be emailed to David's attention. Uh, and then he can incorporate those additional suggestions. Uh, with these that we've heard tonight into the committee. Uh, Michelle.
Yeah, um, thank you so much because you sort of hit on what I was going to ask. If you could possibly. Include the two local historic district commissioners so that they can get the word out to their commission members. I did take it upon myself to um, to email everyone on my, on the first um. I'm a member of the first local historic district, but I don't know if anyone uh, south of the green had any notification at all.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's, it's the kind of. Thing that we're not gonna probably get everybody. There's gonna be people we miss, so we're hoping that the community um, will just have some organic. Uh, effort that just spreads it amongst their own conversations and um, because there's just so many different stakeholders. Not that we shouldn't take your suggestion and reach out to that group, which we, which I will encourage Dave to do. But there's gonna be a lot of other groups throughout the city with different interests that we might miss. So my hope is that. There is some organic communication just throughout the community to help us reach as many people. Um, so that their input can be heard if they, if they wish to offer it.
And just a reminder that uh, the uh, website that the city maintains. Uh, is the best source of, for meeting information and the P O C D information. Uh, information regarding the P O C D is on the opening page of the city website and it has been there for over two weeks. Um, so uh, that along with the newspaper articles and the public hearing notices. Um, yeah, there's, I think, been ample opportunity if people check the webpage uh, to find the information uh, on the plan.
Okay, that's good. And, and that is uh, the same link that is on our agenda. Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so for those who are looking for the agenda for next meeting, there'll be a link there.
Um, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it'll all be on the opening page of the city website. So you don't even have to look anywhere. It's like the fur, it's. Right, right now, the uh, the budget announcement for the final budget is taking precedence and then we're right after it, but. We were on the top for a while and we'll be on the top again once the budget's done.
Adam, would you like to uh, close this up? We got a couple of minutes till eight.
Yeah, I would just say um, to thank everybody, I've got a um, PDF open here and have been taking comments and notes. Um, this entire time and listening to all of you. Um, I think all the comments that uh, have been shared today. Show a really um, one great understanding of Milford and of the um, you know, difficult task of putting together a P O C D. And I think you've given the uh, the commission a lot to uh, think about and to um, digest here and. And just say, you know, thank you very much for, for taking the time. I know um, all of you are busy people. And so showing up for this is, is very much appreciated.
Okay, um, without uh, further comment from anybody, we will close the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, uh, do we, do we need a motion to adjourn, David? This is a special meeting.
Yeah, I would make a, a motion to adjourn.
I will second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Hi. Opposed? None? We're done. Thanks, everybody.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome. Thank you.